We are in session for the January the eighth, two thousand twenty four, meeting of the Clear Creek County Commissioners. And the first, the first item of the day is always is public comment. And as always, we have three minutes for public comment for anyone who wishes to speak. And if you would please come up to the podium and regardless of whether we know you identify yourself and where you live and in general terms. You don't have to give the exact street address.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff. Thanks for having me today. Happy New Year. I'm Al Frye Jr. Reside at one eight five eight Kirk Gold Road in Evergreen, Colorado. And I'm currently the President of Albert Frye and Sons and the Wallstrom Quarry. Today I wanted to come up and get on the public record to share some news with the Commission today. But I wanted to give you guys a brief little rundown here, but sixty years ago, even sixty-five years ago, my grandfather started Albert Frye and Sons after he immigrated to the United States, living the American dream in a little gravel pit in Adams County. Forty years ago, my father sat in this very room. And the former B O C C and my dad agreed that it was a good idea to start the Wallstrom Quarry. Fourteen years ago, we lost our father to a genetic disease, which was tough. But man, he worked really hard to pass this business and this legacy on to his kids. You know, maybe shortly before that, or when we were kids, he built us the biggest sandbox it could ever dream of. And when I look back and he was just preparing us for something much bigger. But at that point, the five children, my younger siblings, took the task and the challenge to continue to grow and run this business. And in two thousand twenty-three, Albert Frye and Sons and the Wallstrom Quarry was the fifty-fourth largest crushstone producer in the United States with one site. Ninety-seven employees, fifteen of which reside in Clear Creek County. And in two thousand twenty-four, I'm here to report to the B O C C and the citizens of Clear Creek County that our family is elected to sell the equity of our company. We've chosen to do this for numerous reasons, but the main priority is to focus on the health and wellness of our family. My two younger brothers have the same disease as my dad. We have a significant gap in succession for our family. And now is the time to prepare and focus on that. It will bring us resolve and we look forward to what the future brings. There's a lot of uncertainty, but just understand that I really believe that this is a choice founded in strong rationale and frankly faith, that this is God's plan for our family and our business and our people and our communities which we operate. So what does it look like? Not quite at liberty to share what that looks like. But I think it's really going to be as good or better for Clear Creek County. The successor is a premier operator and I think it will build quite well. Will it be the same? Probably not. Will it be the same as as far as the personal touch that our families put on this business? I don't think so. But it's a good company and I think they are good stewards and we hand-selected this successor because of their reputation, the way they operate and and the way they treat their people. I'm planning on sticking around if they'll have me. I want to see good succession for the assets and the legacy that we built. I'm very intrigued to see how it's going to go. I want to see my people taken care of. Also, I don't plan on going anywhere. I want to see all three of my kids graduate Clear Creek High School. My youngest is ten years old, so I got a little more time here. And so I just wanted to say thank you and thank you to Clear Creek County and there will be more, more to come. And at some point in time, I would love to come back here or in a formal or informal meeting and introduce you to the successor. And get the B O C C and the citizens of Clear Creek County on the right path. So, thank you.
All right. Al, thanks for, thanks to you and your family for many years of good partnership with the county and to the county from your father and from yourself and and I can only say I wish your family well and take care of them and yourself.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say the same. I think you guys have been somewhat of a model for what a good corporate system looks like in a county. And you obviously care about our school system and about the other stakeholders in the county. I have a question for you, Al. When, when do you think that the, you know, approximate timeframe that the transaction will be completed? And you might be in a position to come back and introduce our new partner and talk more about it.
It's highly likely that the closing will occur this month and we'll promptly facilitate an introduction shortly thereafter.
Sounds good. Congratulations.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Thirty-second break. Can I ask questions? And, all right, so the next item on the agenda, oh, do we have any other public comment online? I see none in the room unless Maria wants to get up and.
No one online is raising their hand. Nope.
No one online? Okay, the next item is consideration approval of Resolution twenty-four dash zero five, Resolution levying general property taxes for the year two thousand twenty-three to help defray the costs of government for Clear Creek County, Colorado for the two thousand and twenty-four budget year, Maria Ostrom.
Thank you, Commissioner. See, I have a PowerPoint here. We'll get it pulled up. Normally, we'd be talking about adopting a mill levy in our first meeting in December, but with all of the property tax legislation that's occurred, the Mad Dash to year end here, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of things needed to happen and the deadlines were delayed by the state. Next page, please, Megan. So I want to try to go through several things. No, yeah, thank you. I want to try to go through a few things here and I, as I was putting this together, I was trying to think about what would be the logical order. Property tax can be kind of overwhelming and confusing for the public if you're not dwelling on it in in it every day like someone like me who is. So I try, I wanted to try this, lay this out in a logical way. So if we'll walk through a summary of this property tax legislation, what it means, how it impacts people. And then we'll talk about a residential example. I picked Idaho Springs. And we'll talk about someone's property in Idaho Springs and how this legislation has impacted them specifically. And then we'll talk about the change in assessed value by property class for Clear Creek County. It was a reassessment year and we're layering on top of the fact that it was a reassessment year, this property tax legislation. So a lot of things to consider. And then I feel, I feel like it's really important to understand, you know, property tax doesn't just come to the county. We collect it, you write your check to the county, but it goes to Idaho Springs, it goes to a lot of different jurisdictions. So we don't retain all of it. And so I think it'd be good to walk through, where is that? Where's my property tax going when I send that check to the county? Then we'll talk about county property tax specifically and what's happened over the past ten years. And then it's time for the B O C C to ask questions and comment and weigh in and adopt a mill levy. Thanks, Megan. Next page. All right, so property tax legislation, the important piece of legislation that's having the biggest impact on residents this year is this Senate Bill twenty-three B one. The legislature, right at the end of November, made a decision to increase the exemption up to fifty-five thousand dollars. So this means if your home is valued at five hundred thousand, the first fifty-five thousand of it is exempt. And then the other thing they did was they changed the residential assessment rate. They reduced it. And so you take your five hundred thousand, reduce it by fifty-five thousand, what's left? Multiply that times six point seven percent. So we're only going to be taxing six point set seven percent of the remaining value.
And then find out around a one percent difference. That's what it looks like to me.
One percent difference. What do you mean? Sorry.
The reduction is about a one percent difference. So it looks like it will reduce people's taxes by the difference between the fifty-five and the fifteen plus another one percent on everything else.
Which, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we're going to go through an example and it might be a little more clear. That's a good question. And it might be a little more clear when we walk through this example. The final piece of this legislation, which actually really impacted our assessor and a lot of the local jurisdictions, is these deadlines. So everyone was used to getting these things done in December. And these deadlines have been moved out into January, which is kind of, it's creating a delay in like getting the budget book put together. It's just, it's just, it's nice that they gave us longer time, but it's also making things a little more difficult as we're just not accustomed to this. All right, next slide, please. Okay, now, I thought it might be interesting to know what some of the counties around us are going through. There was some talk earlier. A month and a half ago or so, the governor made a public statement about people should reduce their mill levies. You don't need the money. And it was interesting what I found when I talked with my counterparts, finance directors of these other counties. You know, we're all, we all have our struggles, right? So Gilpin County, they're subject to Tabor still. They're going to have to do a temporary tax reduction because of their Tabor requirement. We, of course, our voters decided that we didn't have to have that revenue limitation several years ago. So we're not under that same restriction. The other thing that's going on with Gilpin County is their rec, Parks and Rec mill levy expired in two thousand twenty-three and their, their voters this last fall said, no, they did not want to extend that. Next, can you click next for me? Okay, Summit County. This home is interesting. I did not know this. I tend to think of Summit County as being flush with revenue and having really good tourism dollars. And, and in fact, I heard from their finance director that they've been operating in a deficit in their general fund for the past two years. They, the town of Keystone, it voted to incorporate formally. And they will, they've done that now in January and with that decision, Keystone will be pulling about six million dollars in revenue away from the county. And so the county was already trying to figure out how they were going to fix this issue going on. But now they've got to plan for losing this about six million in revenue. So they ultimately did adopt their mill levy at on twelve twenty and they held it flat. They did not drop it. Eagle County, I didn't speak directly to this finance director. They did have a huge change in their assessed value. You know, when you're hearing this in the news about home prices or values going up forty percent, this is one of the areas where that really did happen. That didn't happen in our county, but it really did happen there. They have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to adopt their mill levy. So we'll see what the outcome of that is next one. And then finally, Lake County. Now, I specifically picked some of these counties because they are the ones that are in our group for the district attorney allocation and how we pay in to fund the district attorney. Lake County, their board is very concerned about the most vulnerable in the community and how do we protect those that are living on a fixed income? They also have a meeting scheduled for January ninth tomorrow, but have not made any decisions about what they will do with their melody. Next one, please. Okay, so this is a home in Idaho Springs. Along the the main road there, Colorado Avenue, pretty typical for what's happened. And I picked Idaho Springs because it's the most populated town in our community. Each of the, each of your, each of the areas are in the county a little different. Your mill levy is going to be a little different. You know, you might live on the very eastern part of county and you might be in the Evergreen Fire Protection District. So you're going to have a little bit of a different bottom line than someone in Idaho Springs would have. So in two thousand twenty-one, the legislature passed House Bill twenty-two-one-two ninety-three. And they lowered the residential assessment rate from seven point one five to six point nine five. They also created this new class of property tax category called multi-family residential. And the residential assessment rate is how much of your property they're going to tax. And you can see what that difference did. So before the drop, we would have been taxing this particular resident on twenty-six thousand dollars. But after the drop in the residential rate, we're taxing this person on twenty-five thousand dollars. One more click, Megan. So that means, and one more click after that. So this person with that particular legislation saved fifty-six dollars because of the drop in the residential assessment rate. Okay, so now let's go to the next page. So now we're, now we moved ahead to two thousand twenty-two. The legislature passed House Bill twenty-two-two thirty-eight and they said, you know what? One more click, Megan. Not only are we going to drop the residential assessment rate, but we're going to add an exemption too. So they added a fifteen thousand dollar exemption to residential properties. And instead of taxing this person on twenty-six thousand dollars, we're now taxing this person on twenty-four thousand dollars. One more click. And so this person saved a hundred and eighty-three dollars because of this newer legislation. So jump forward one more page here and now we're moving into two thousand twenty-three. One more click. So again, the legislature passed something called Senate Bill twenty-three B one. And the property tax assessor is very busy. Donna G is very, very busy putting all of these changes in the system. But they said, you know what? We're going to give residents a fifty-five thousand dollar exemption. We're going to subtract that from the value of their home. But you can see that the value actually is quite a bit higher because it was a reassessment year. So their property is no longer valued at three hundred and seventy thousand. It's now valued at five hundred and one thousand. And if you think about where you live in your neighborhood and things that you've seen go up for sale in the past four or a couple of years, property values have increased significantly. The market value of your home has increased significantly. And that's just, that's just the market acting the way the market does. The, the values in our neighborhood have gone up. Because of this legislation, on this particular property, this person will save four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars or four hundred and forty-six dollars, excuse me, in property tax. I wish. Okay, one more click, Megan. So let's just sum it all up. Over the three-year period, this person saved these amounts of money. Oh, one back. It's for a total of over the last three years, they will have saved six hundred and eighty-five dollars on their property tax bills. And this is the cumulative impact of all this property tax legislation for our customers. Let's go to the next page. Okay, assessed value in our, here specifically in the county. So it was a reassessment year. Our county assessor, Donna G, looked at at properties and said, you know, what, what kind of sales have been taking place in the neighborhood? What's happened? And it, and reevaluated each of our homes and the market value. And after all of that, and then also turning right back around and applying that fifty-five thousand dollar exemption to everyone's property, our residential values went up ten percent. We had a fairly sizable jump in multifamily. I was discussing this information with county manager a couple of days ago and he was correct. This is Big Horn Crossing. We had a sale in Big Horn Crossing that is impacting that jump in multifamily. You can see what's happening with the mine. It declined yet again, twenty percent, which is creating kind of a drag on the bottom line. So all total, all in, our taxable value is going up five percent. Not nearly anything like what you were hearing in the news and other, in some of our other communities, but it's, it's really not that significant. All right, next one, please. Okay, where does our property tax go? When I write a check to the county, where does my money go? Well, let's go back to this Idaho Springs example. Now, I used the mill levy that was in place in two thousand twenty-three and I'm assuming that the mill levy will kind of stay very similar. And so just assume that it's seventy-five mills. So if it's seventy-five mills, you can see that, you know, three percent of my money is going to the library district. Thirty-seven percent is coming to the county general fund, but thirty-nine percent is going to the school district. When I write that check to the county, the county has to turn around and, and dole and, and give out the money to these different districts. All right, next slide, please. So a ten-year trend in property tax. If we were to assume that the B O C C is going to adopt the mill levy today and leave it flat. It has been thirty-five point one five six mills since two thousand fifteen. It hasn't changed since then. And we can kind of see what's been happening back in two thousand sixteen, fourteen point three million of our money or seventy-one percent came from the mine. And of course, we knew that they were going to decrease production. That's a typical thing that happens with the life, life cycle of a mine. They've been very open and upfront with us about that. And then fast forward to two thousand twenty-three and the mine is actually going to be about one point five million of our total property tax for fourteen percent. So drop from over seventy percent down to fourteen percent in less than ten years. And this is why the county is, Commissioners have been working so hard since two thousand fifteen to sort of make sure the county is going to be okay. That we're going to reset our spending and align it with revenues and we're going to be okay. Next slide, please. Okay, so here we are with some board action needed. And I definitely want to be sure and answer any questions or go over any information you need. But we do recommend, staff recommends you hold the mill levy the same at three point one five six mills. You will see, you will collect about eleven point five million from residents if that's the mill levy. Now, remember, half that tax, that, some of that tax, some of the mill levy, when they write their check is going half that tax, that, some of that tax, some of the mill levy when they write their check is going to end up going to um other areas, some of the property tax they paid. We are working with the state to secure backfill. This has been a back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. Um it's, it's difficult because there's about nineteen thousand property tax accounts and we have to get it right. Um but I, I believe that's a good range. I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. But we will know here in another mu- uh probably about two weeks what that exact number is. Um on the right-hand side, this is how the mill levy breaks down by the different functional areas of the county. Here, the county general fund gets the bulk of the mill levy, but of course our road and bridge operation and human services and open space as well. Um so that is the extent of what I wanted to step through and uh I'm going to turn it back to you, chairperson.
Thank you. Um I have one question that I know that uh and I think the first thing I'd like to do is ask each of us to ask questions, so that'll help inform our comments. Um George, you have a question? Did I hear?
Um yeah, the, what's on my mind right now is um on the backfill has have we established that we are eligible for backfill and we're just calculating the amount or is it all still in play?
So the people that we're working with the state, at the state, we've sent in some spreadsheets and they've asked questions. They have not at any point indicated we are not eligible. They just keep asking for more information, something in a little bit of a different format. So we've gone, you know, multiple variations. So I'm assuming that if they're asking for all this information, that we are eligible.
Okay.
And that's what our data shows as well.
Yes.
Okay, my question is regarding, y- you gave an example of a home value that was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. My guess, without looking at any numbers, is that's uh lower than the average home value in Clear Creek County. But, but so my question is, do, what is the average home value in Clear Creek County? And I'm thinking about residences, actual homes.
Yeah, so um you, you may recall the, the example slides. It was three seventy in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, but it's jumped up to five oh one now.
Okay.
Because of the reassessment year. And, and it depends on the area of the county, but five hundred's about right, five hundred and fifty thousand.
Five hundred.
About right for the whole county.
I had guessed five hundred and fifty, so I feel like a genius. Thank you.
All right, Sean, did you have questions?
I don't think so. Uh um I mean, we've been talking about this um and thinking about this for months, so this is sort of about what I expected. Thank you, Maria, for your presentation.
Okay, so uh comments, discussion. George, Sean.
Um, yeah, I'll start. I mean, I, I agree with the staff recommendation uh to not reduce county mills. Um I did reach out to uh I, I, I believe there are four property taxing entities in the county that have the Henderson Mine in their tax base. Um that's us, the school district, the library district, and the rec district. Um I don't believe any of the other three are likely to reduce their mills either. Um you saw that slide. I'm, I'm, thank you for preparing that slide for the public to show that between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-three, we have our, our tax receipts from Henderson Mine reduced by around twelve, twelve and a half million dollars per year. Um we know that our partner organizations are experiencing that too. Um so I think that's sort of important context. I also think it's important for members of the public to be aware that on their own property tax bill, they may see a lot of other property taxing entities out there. Um they may see metro districts and sanitation districts, et cetera. Some of them have very high mill rates and, and are in a uh where for the four organizations I mentioned, we've been seeing these acute reductions. Um there are a lot of entities in Clear Creek County that have not seen those reductions. Um and maybe in a different position. So I just want to point that out. If there are taxpayers listening, um that, that there, I encourage you to open up your tax bill, your personal tax bill and, and take a look at who's, who you've authorized to charge property taxes and, and what that larger, larger framework looks like. With respect to our own mills, um um it's, it's very clear that we just can't afford uh a, a decision to reduce our mills would be a decision to reduce our services in the very near future. Um I think we elected the public to try to maintain services as we've, as we've stated is our goal during this fiscal crisis that we have. Lastly, I just want to say I, I'm very grateful to the state for the, the tax relief that they have provided. Um because it is, they are largely making counties whole, especially counties like Clear Creek County. Um and so they're helping us provide property tax relief without reducing services. So I just want to point that out to the public. Um those savings are, are meaningful and are um backfilled so that your, your road can still be plowed, et cetera, et cetera. Um so that's, I think, sort of what I have to start. Um and happy to hear from Sean and Randy.
Yeah, Sean.
Uh on a practical note, even if we wanted to change the mill levy, we have to decide so soon that, you know, doesn't the time available doesn't really warrant or allow for any type of thoughtful analysis. So I, I think we should leave it where it is. Um I, I do tend to agree that with our uh downdraft in receipts from the mine, it's unlikely that you know, put on my um, my, my forecasting hat, it's unlikely that we're going to be in a position to reduce it anytime in the near future. Um so I, I think we're, I'm ready to uh to take action on this one and leave it where it is.
Yeah, tha- thanks, Sean. And my, my comments are, uh well, first of all, I completely agree exactly one hundred percent with each of you. And then I'd like to mention a couple of other percentages that I did some quick calculations, which is why I asked the number of and by my calculation, the additional forty thousand that the state has given us uh divided by a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar average home value means that each person's, what the state has done through that one action is to reduce it. Their uh value, their real property value by seven point two seven percent. Uh and Sean is dead on the money that that uh property, that the assessment reduction is uh it's, it's ninety-six one hundredths of one percent. That's close enough to one percent, the bullseye. And that's a total reduction the state has provided is of eight point two three percent. At the same time, the example of the home that you gave that is very close to that average value, that five hundred and fifty thousand dollar average value still saw it despite those two reductions by our forecast. Um an increase of about sixteen percent, which means that the state has picked up about a third of the pain that those people feel, but it also means that they're picking up about eight percent per year because that's, that's a sixteen percent increase over two years after the state action, which is uh certainly not out of line and probably, and obviously way less than the increase in property values. Uh and the increase in cost across the board. And of course, we're facing what we're facing at the county and it would be both impractical and irresponsible for us to reduce the mill levy at this time and have any hope of maintaining the services that we've got. And we've already, over the last several years, this board has done a lot to tighten its belt as hard as it can. And uh so I just want to let the, the public know that I feel the pain, the price is going up, the price went up for each of us sitting at this table, for all of us at this table, live here or even that don't live in Clear Creek County. And it's um, it's just a sign of the times in, in large part. So I'm also ready to take action on uh this item and um I'm happy to call for a motion.
Um I just want to add a little bit to that. I just would like to share there are, um and I appreciate the comments of Sean and Randy. Um there are programs out there for folks who are struggling to pay their property tax bills. Um my favorite of those programs is called the Tax Deferral Program. Um that allows you to take an increase in your property tax bill and basically defer it until you sell your home. Um I think that's a really great policy. I, I encourage the state to invest more in that policy. Um and that, that's, that's one of a handful of programs that are out there. I also want to point out, um because it hasn't been mentioned yet, that I really like the, the value reduction, the forty thousand dollar value reduction, because that means the homes that are worth less are getting a bigger percentage discount on their property tax bill. Um and, and lastly, I just, I just, for the, for the benefit of the public, I know this board has been very committed at the state level to securing better taxation options for our constituents. Um really what's going on in this conversation is that we we don't have good options uh to, to provide revenues for the services that the public expects and deserves. Um, um the, we have raft transactions, we have lift ticket transactions, we have transactions in our economy that we're not able to tax. And, and um I believe that the people of Clear Creek County and the people of Colorado deserve to give themselves better taxation options. Um it's something that I'll spend the rest of my time in office working on.
Yeah, I agree with that. So that said, do we have any more comment or do we have a motion?
I'll just second what George said about the Property Tax Deferral Program. I think that's run out of the treasurer's office, but if it's, it kind of really applies to somebody who uh is in their forever home and um is having, you know, a desire for a little bit of extra cash flow, because when your house, uh when you eventually blast off and you sell your house, uh that's when you pay the uh deferred uh uh property taxes. But I do know that the interest rate that's available is fairly attractive as well. Uh and I don't think it's actually changed with the increases in interest rates recently either.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, then um I move we approve resolution number two four dash zero five. Resolution levying general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-three to help defray the costs of government for Clear Creek County, Colorado for the twenty twenty-four budget year.
Uh we have a motion in a second. I believe we've had discussions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is uh we, is that we will move into the Emergency Services General Improvement District Board of Directors, which we also serve as. And uh consider our eight forty AM item, consideration of approval of res- resolution twenty-four dash zero one. Resolution letting general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-three to help defray the cost of government for Clear Creek County Emergency Services General Improvement District, Clear Creek County, Colorado for the twenty twenty-four budget year. Maria, I think you have, do you have some more slides or anything?
Do, yes.
Thank you.
Some of it's very similar. Next page, please, Megan. So some, some of the information we went through on the um previous uh meeting, the county board meeting. Now with your emergency services G I D board hats on, we'll, we'll go through some of the same information. Next slide, please, Megan. Um as a reminder, you know, we have this legislation that is also in place for um our emergency services G I D. Uh next slide. In this particular uh property taxing entity, the uh taxpayer at that same location in Idaho Springs over the three-year period cumulatively saved forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Now, the, the G I D's mill levy is a lot, lot lower, right, than the county. It, it's right around four and a half. Okay, next slide, please. Um their assessment, their bottom line is different than ours. And so I thought it might be interesting to talk about why is their bottom line different? Can you do one more click for me, Megan? Thank you. Okay, so on the right-hand side, here's how we went it by the county. But you can see residential didn't go up the same, right? And it's because the fire district, our, our emergency services uh G I D is not the same area. It is not the whole county. It does not encompass the eastern side of the county and large parts of Evergreen. Um you can see that the mine is the same, right? We, we both have the same uh, the same boundaries related to the mine, but, but the uh you know, the G I D, the emergency services G I D is going up almost ten percent and, and the county is only going up five. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so here's the boundary. This, this might be interesting for those that are watching. You can see over there on that eastern part of the county. Um all of those homes and businesses are in the Evergreen Fire Protection District. Additionally, in the Clear Creek Emergency Services District, the towns, the mill levy is not applied on homes in the towns. Okay. Next slide, please. So here's what's happened to tenure with their property tax. Um four point five six nine mills. It's been the same since twenty fifteen. Uh almost two million came in from the mine back in twenty sixteen. Um and of course, that has dropped and that was eighty-six percent. Remember that number for the county was seventy-one percent back in twenty sixteen? Eighty-six percent of uh the, the emergency services district brought, brought in from the mine itself and that has dropped to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars or twenty-eight percent.
And so the reason those two percentages are both higher than in the other, which is, was it seventy percent, fourteen percent? Is because of residential valuations and other valuations on the west end of the county are on average less than those on the east end of the county. Is that correct?
You nailed it. Exactly. Yeah, we aren't picking up in this particular property taxing area, we aren't picking up some of those higher-end homes in Evergreen.
And so those are excluded from this one.
Correct.
Picking those up. So therefore the, the, the mine constitutes a higher percentage.
Mm-hmm. Okay, represents a much higher percentage. Yeah, next slide, please, Megan. Okay, so we're here for board action. Uh we are recommending that you hold the mill levy the same as it's been for the past nine years. Um that means we'd be collecting from residents and businesses in the district about seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. We are working with the state to secure the backfill. It's going to be in that range of twenty to twenty-five and we should know in a couple of weeks what that number, exact number will be.
Questions and comments? Imagine they're similar.
Um I don't have any questions on this one. Uh some comments. Um you all know that you have appointed me to serve on the Fire Authority Board. Um I'm here to report, as you know, that the Fire Authority is in no better financial position than, than Clear Creek County. Uh we're prepared to approve a budget that is uh one and a half million dollars in the red this year. Um the, uh a conversation by the fire wi- with the fire chief, the assistant fire chief and myself resulted in kind of a consensus among the three of us that we would ask this board not to reduce mills for the Fire Authority. Um so that's, I think, what I have to share there. I would also just point out that um I believe the way the I G A is constructed, um if we reduce our bills, we will also reduce the municipals, municipality. Wow, the obligation of the municipalities. Um and, and so that would have a, a, you know, compounding impact. Mention the municipalities, I, I will just mention that they did agree to voluntarily increase their contribution, a number of them this year. Um because in addition to our deficit, we have a, a lack of service, service provision, a lack of preparedness. Um so I, I think it would be a mistake to reduce these mills.
I just wanted to add, um yeah, I think it's obvious to those of us who are paying close attention, but when we talk about adjusting the mill levy rate due to the environment here in Colorado, the only adjustment that's legally possible for us would be to reduce it. So anybody out there is thinking about, hey, why don't you just increase the, the mill rate to solve some of your financial crisis, that would re- require an election.
Right. Right.
But I'm fine. I, I agree, like we should leave it. And then, I mean, it's obviously something, well, for those of you who may be watching or listening later, there is an ongoing analysis uh that is coming to uh a conclusion regarding the financial sustainability of the of the Fire Authority, because if you look at that graph from two thousand fifteen until now and and really allowed Georgia's comment to sink in about a, a one and a half million dollar deficit, you can see that there is a crisis right now.
Yeah, and by percentage, a much greater crisis even than the one that we're facing. Yeah. Okay, well, I have no comments. I think you guys covered it well and I'm ready for motion. If one of you is ready to render it.
Um okay, acting as the Emergency Services General Improvement District Board of Directors, I move we approve resolution two four dash zero one, levying general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-three to help defray the cost of government for Clear Creek County Emergency Services General Improvement District.
Second. We have a motion in a second and we concluded our discussion, I believe. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh gratitude and compliments to staff. Thank you for all the promises.
Thank you. I think with that, uh we are, we've concluded our uh agenda for the day. I think with that, uh, we are, we've concluded our, uh, agenda for the day. So, uh, n- unless anybody else is ready, has anything to spend time talking about, I'm ready to adjourn the meeting.